Good evening. I would like to call the Monday, September 26th Board Meeting to order. And if you would all please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. If now you would stand for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And now we will have Esther Williams, Director, read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much, Esther. And now we'll move on to Exhibit A on Page 1, which is a donation from CUNY Mutual. And I see we have Sharina here, and I'll give you a little background. Any donation over $2,500 must be approved by the Board of Education. The Waterloo Schools would like to accept with gratitude this $15,000 donation from CUNY Mutual. CUNY is committed to supporting equity in the areas where they are physically located and recruit their workforce. This donation will be distributed between $5,000 between Lincoln, George Washington Carver Academy, and East High School. And Sharina here will give us additional information, and I'll first get the recommendation on the table. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges with gratitude the $15,000 donation from CUNY Mutual to support literacy and equity programs at Lincoln, George Washington Carver Academy, and East High School as presented.
All right, thank you all for...
Some move.
Wait, some move.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, just a procedural thing. We have to get a motion on the table. Thank you. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Green light on.
Y'all fancy. Wow. But anyway, thank you for allowing me to be here. As you know, I am a product of the Waterloo School District and happy to serve in the capacity where I now get to influence and allocate resources to my hometown. The reason why we chose those three schools, one, we are centering equity, but we also do know and understand that those schools are physically located in a low census tract area. It does not necessarily have to, just one additional clarification, does not necessarily have to be focused on literacy. We would like the school board administration to decide where that money should be best used, so meaning that the principals could have sole autonomy on how that should be distributed throughout their schools. So three checks, $5,000 each, to those three schools that were listed.
Wow, that's awesome. That's awesome. Okay, and we will mention tonight, too, that Director Johnson is gone and Director Schmidt is gone. And on this motion, Director Williams will be abstaining from the vote, just because his relationship with CUNY. But we thank you so very much. And was this raised by employees? Did you have, or is this just a corporate donation?
No. So we have a foundation board that, a foundation that is 54 years young. We do this partnership. I came last year when we gave this to Grant Elementary, well, no, Dr. Walter Cunningham School of Excellence, when we gave the $5,000 to them as well. So we have an adopted school partnership that's in Madison where the bulk of our employees are pulled from. And we now are trying to sustain and make sure that we have a relationship with the Waterloo School District where we have about 32% of our employees that we pull from as well.
That's amazing. I'm sure you have employees who have kids in the district. And the fact that it's for literacy and equity programs, you touched my heart. So I'm really excited. Thank you so much. This is a big chunk of money to give, and we really do appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Hopefully this will continue, and you'll see me back next year.
I do remember you here last year for Dr. Cunningham School, and that was just super. So just helping so many kids in, and I just like how you target the areas that can get the best bang for your buck. So I really appreciate that, too. So any other comments from Board members?
Thank you to your company for being a leader on this kind of thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll call for a vote now. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
One abstention, and Chair votes aye, so the motion carried 4-0. So we do accept it. Thank you so much, and please express our gratitude to all the people within your company and corporation in Madison, so too.
I will, thank you. I do have one question. I think I was waiting on an email on how to send the check. Should it be three individual checks, or should it just be one check? I'm not really quite sure. We want to make this as easy as possible. One check to the Waterloo School District? Okay, all right.
Michael is our CFO, so he's the good answer to that. So, and then we will divide that accordingly to the three schools and to make sure they're applied appropriately.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and for the donation. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, that's an exciting one, is information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to approach the Board and speak to us before I read the caveat? Otherwise, I will not. Okay, looks like we have none, so we appreciate you all being here. So the next thing is the consent agenda, and this starts on Page 2, Item B, which is the minutes of the September 12, 2022 regular Board meeting. Item C, which is on Page 5, personnel appointments and adjustments. And Item D on Page 8, bills due and payable and bills paid between Board meetings. Are any of these three wanting to be removed by any Board member? Okay.
B.
B.
Or C, excuse me.
C, okay, so Item C. So can I get a motion to accept Item B and D, please?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. And then we will get the motion on the table. Superintendent's recommendation? Oh, I'm sorry. We need a vote for that, yeah. So all in favor of accepting B and D?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried 5-0. Now we will get the motion C on Page 5, personal appointments and adjustments on the table. And the superintendent's recommendation is to approve the appointments and adjustments as stated.
Some move.
Second. Thank you. And questions? Go ahead, Esther.
Just needed update on where we're sitting with certified staff and...
Not too much different than where we were probably the last time we met or the time before that. We have hired a few certified staff since then. You'll see the first person on here for personnel appointments. We were able to find a teacher who recently moved to this area and hired them for a position we needed at Cunningham. We have already made a mid-year hire for one of our open ELL positions, which is a really good thing, because those positions are, people with that endorsement are becoming increasingly harder to find. So, and then my department is working right now on a process of identifying our student teachers who are going to be in our buildings this year, and how, if they are doing it successfully, how we can get them to be in our buildings permanently, so.
Can you give a more specific update on the special needs certified staff that's needed and pairs?
Special needs? I don't think we have hired anyone additional in that area, probably since, I would have to say probably August. So nothing, nothing really new there. As you probably know, the supply of applicants are very small in that area, even earlier in the hiring season in the spring. So in terms of our pair of educator positions, though, on the last Board agenda, you would have seen a lot of that were recommended for hire. And I do feel like we are making some progress in that area.
One other step that we've talked about is, there's two steps we're taking looking at for second semester. One is really looking at all of our student teachers within the district to see, to gauge their interest and possibly being very creative in how we can possibly utilize them in the district. The second thing we talked about, actually at our last WEA meeting, was reaching out to all of our recent retirees and relatively recent retirees, just to see if maybe there's any interest in coming back, working within theiriper, you know, there's requirements within ipers about how much you can make, but also perhaps like piecing together some positions. I think we, the example we use is sometimes people look forward to retirement, and then a few months in, or a year in, or two years in, they kind of are like, ah, I'm kind of bored right now. And so we're, I want you guys to know, like, no rock is going to go unturned at this point, trying to fill our positions and being extra creative. That's something that Anthony and I have talked about at length, is how do we get super creative to try to get some of our, you know, all of our positions filled, especially those certified positions?
I also saw a link come through, Anthony, for substitute renewal or the substitute authorization that it can be done on your own time, at your own pace. So that was a great thing to have, and maybe we can blast that out again, too, to everybody.
That was a very, very recent change they made.
Yeah, that's, it's awesome.
And have you gotten much response from retirees, or?
I, we haven't reached out yet. I just got, had my department run the list at the end of last week, so.
I think what I hear, I'm kind of have some friends in that age group and that have recently retired. And, you know, I think what some other districts in the state have done have kind of warped it for us a little bit in that, you know, they hear, people are getting lots and lots of money incentive to come back, so it makes it a little bit harder, I think.
We just have amazing programs, though, so it's okay.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Okay, any other questions for Anthony about personnel appointments? Okay, all in favor of approving, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Now we will move on to Item E, and that's on Page 15. And that's the appointment of a Level 1 investigator. And we do have Sheena Kennedy here, our Executive Director of Student and At-Risk Services, to explain this. I'll get the motion on the table, please. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Sheena Kennedy as the district's Level 1 investigator, and Sandy Schmitz and Jamie Dunn as the alternate Level 1 investigators.
Some move. Second.
Thank you. And you can come on up, Sheena. Make sure the green light's on.
Good evening. I think this is the first I've ever been to a Board meeting, so thank you for having me. This is, you know, a relatively new endeavor for me, but as I understand it, this is a carried expectation for each district to maintain a Level 1 investigator, which essentially looks at any alleged misconduct, staff to student, and does the hard part of investigating with a lovely, I'll find it, about 100-page document to follow in order to make sure that's carried out with high fidelity.
Is this something that usually goes with this position?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, I checked with Pam, and it is, because the position changed, it has to be named each time the position changes, so, yeah.
Stacy, I would say in my past experiences, districts have a number of Level 1 investigators.
Oh.
So, I mean, you'll always have one, kind of chief one, but then the amount that you can have trained is unlimited.
Is it something that's really big for one person, especially now that she's just in her first year?
Well, you know, I, I don't know what the volume of the Level 1 complaints we get are here. I can, probably in my past three years in my last district, I think I had two. So, and really, it's focused on staff to student allegations of abuse specifically, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Mandatory reporter, that type of thing, it's more student, staff and student?
Yes, yes. They do have to certif, they do have to train and be certified in it.
But issues like, you mean, like where they just don't get along? Is that what you're talking about? Or something's happened, right?
It would be specific to cases of potential abuse, such as physical, sexual, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And it does say that each appointee's phone number will be published in the Courier. So just to make sure all of our people know that, because if your name's in the paper and that contact info, it might, you know. All right, any other questions?
I guess since this is your first time up here, Sheena is our Executive Director of Student and At-Risk Services for everybody watching in the world, so this is Sheena.
And this is a very good, short meeting to be a part of, today. It's a good one to break in on.
Awesome, thank you.
Short so far.
Don't jinx us. Don't jinx us here, okay?
Okay, all in favor of accepting this recommendation?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheena.
All right. As we said, this is a very short agenda. We are now down to the superintendent's report, so we will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Okay, let's keep the role going here, right?
I'll let you share the athletics.
So it's okay. Okay, so I'm gonna, I got three updates here. First, we had our first dress code committee meeting last week. I thought it went really well. We brought in the outside facilitator, Beth Strike with the AEA. She's Communications Director. Did an outstanding job. Esther, I gotta give you serious props on pushing for us to include students. We had a lot of stu, we reached out and asked for five students from each high school, and we got, we didn't get 15, but it was probably 10 students that were there, brought some great perspectives. Overall, we had about 32, 33 people show up, a very diverse group in terms of like, position, positions within the district, leadership, teachers, parents, students, community members. So it was a really good, really good conversation. So we've got another meeting coming up next week to take a little bit, I guess, to continue the process. Really good article in the Courier. I don't know if you had a chance to see that or not, but they did a nice job of covering it.
So was that, did that show our survey thing?
Yeah, they included the survey, a real brief, like, it was a kind of just a quick summary of the survey data, which again was like 87-ish percent, you know, the one, the question I always allude to was like, do you think there needs to be a change? And 87% said yes, 13% said no.
I wanted to thank you for sharing that so openly and transparently, so people don't have to wonder, like, what were their, like, I got a lot of communication from people, like, wow, so they were excited to see the feedback, and just the fact that we got so many people to respond, so.
Yeah, 4,500 responses.
It's pretty good.
So thank you, and then thank you, too. I mean, again, I like your guys' feedback. You'd mentioned to me that, hey, I don't think the students got it. I thought they had, and we did, we dug a little bit. They hadn't. Esther reached out and said, hey, make sure students are included in the event, and I, you know, and so it's great, great feedback. So I appreciate that. We had a PD day last Friday. I had a chance to visit a number of the buildings. It was a really good day. We actually delivered professional development on Zello, which is that K-12 career development program. So I had a chance to kind of go in and see what that looked like from the teacher's perspective.
What level, did everybody get that, all level, do you know?
You know, I was in, I was at West High School, and I was, I sat in a couple different rooms. Um, I'm not sure. Everybody did, all right, yes. I should know that answer, but I just saw what, yeah, so everybody got to.
Because everyone will be doing it, right?
I was at Hoover, too. So I was at Hoover and West and saw it, but, yep.
Okay.
So really good there. Appreciate you guys' feedback during the work session. I've been working a lot with Amy, Amy, and Jeff on next steps there. I just wouldn't want to say, I see a number, handful of our WEA people are here. I feel like it's been a good start to the year. Obviously, there's things we can always improve upon, and, but I feel like it's been a really good relationship so far. They brought us some good feedback that we're digging into. One of the biggest things that I'm going to be looking into is there's just been some feedback from our pre-K teachers about some of the changes that we made for this year. And I'm going to be meeting with them next week, or wait, is it this week? Either way, I think it might be this week, actually, to just hear some of their feedback. And this, I think it's more about how, and again, this is just, I want to listen to them and see how we can implement change better moving forward, so they feel like they're a part of the process. So again, and then the last, that's right, I had those three things written down. We're going to talk about athletics. I'll let you share that, but I've just been really good. You know, I've talked to Dan about the move to the new conference for East High. Already, it's starting to prove dividends. I feel like it's just, it's evened out the playing field for athletes, I feel like. So I know Sue's going to share some of those results, but I think, thank you for your support in that, in that move, and I just feel good about what we're seeing so far. Feeling a lot of positive, just momentum in terms of some of the results we're getting from some of our athletics programs, so. Gym floor. I didn't have a chance, you know, we're going to do my typical, like, let's text Zach real quick and see what we can get. But I have a feeling, everything I've heard is October 1, which is what, next week?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, okay. So let's see if I can get the answer real quick here.
I'll give you an update after tomorrow.
Uh-oh.
I'll be over there tomorrow.
I communicated with Zach today, and he said that they are still on for, and I said I was there, and it did look like there was a lot of work that was left to be done yet, but that, that would be a Hercules job if it was completed. But that's what he said they're still hearing is October 1.
And timeline is great, but I don't want it to be at the expense of craftsmanship and quality, you know, so. But I, there's better people than me to watch on all that.
Well, and luckily, the extended forecast is upper 60s and 70s, because I'm thinking of the PE classes specifically, you know, because they're going to have to go inside at some point, you know, they can't remain outside for, they have the upper gym, but there's just too many classes, so. Okay, thank you very much. We'll start with Stacy tonight.
And I'm gonna have Anthony help me on this, because we had our Equity Committee meeting. And I'm just going to do the two points that I remember most, and then you just jump in, because Anthony leads them with Evan, and it's wonderful, and there's so much, it's so different, Anthony, than from a year ago when I joined that committee, like, there's so much going on. And I really feel like it's going to make, it is making already, and it's going to continue to make a big difference. So there is discussion a lot about supports for our LGBTQ+ students, especially in our middle schools, what that looks like, what's happening. And then the other big one that stuck with me was finding the Equity Plan that every school has written. And I know that Dr. Mohorn has worked really hard to have those done, finding out where they are, and just seeing how it's being met, so. And I don't remember everything else, Anthony, so please jump in.
Those were the two, I would say, bigger ticket items that we discussed. So kind of looking forward to the next meeting. We're hoping to have a more detailed update on where we're at with achievement and things like that, so. And then we talked a little bit about Teach Waterloo, and then just very briefly about some additional university partnerships, but not anything we're really ready to discuss publicly, publicly yet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Jesse?
A little lighter here, but I wanted to just show appreciation to, particularly Jamie Broco. She does see, does a lot of work with the garden stuff at Lou Henry. And, you know, living in a neighborhood that walks through various, they've done a lot with that. I know some of the other buildings also had to raise beds and stuff, but it's kind of neat, Bill, to see what's growing there. And then, you know, they had some raspberries, Bill, just do that. But, you know, opportunity for the kids to actually work with that, you know, get their hands physically and learn more, you know, a little bit versus just always in a classroom, Bill, to how many different lessons you can learn from that. But I know she's done a lot of work with that over there. I know there's other buildings that have the similar programs. And I think it's just a neat addition to have those hands-on learning opportunities, because every kid learns a little different, and sometimes what they can learn from, where science or math, or whatever they're doing there, by having a physical way to do it versus just only a textbook. So, but anyway, it's really nice what they're doing, and I'm kind of sad to see Raspberry Grove go for the season, but.
Well, I'm sure there's some kids that probably haven't even seen a raspberry on a bush or a line before, so it's just a lot of newness, too, so that's awesome. Okay, how about you, Janelle?
All right, mixing it up, okay. If there was one thing that I could change in the world right now, it would be to change how the world sees the teaching profession. I know we have a lot of teachers here tonight. I know how hard what you do is. I know how hard it is every day to face the same students and try new tricks to get them to be engaged and with you and in your classroom instead of their heads everywhere, and the discipline takes so much emotional work. I know that you go home tired at the end of every day, and I know that this is one of the hardest jobs in the world. So if I could change anything in the world, I would change how our world sees the teaching profession in America, because it is one of the hardest jobs to be done. I really appreciate what you do, and I really appreciate the sacrifices that you make. And we will keep finding ways, financial incentives and other incentives, as we do, to try to help you and show you that we believe that teaching is a very difficult and very important profession.
Thank you, Janelle. And Esther?
I'll leave my initial Board comment short. Just glad to see that the weight rooms at both schools are up and running now, hearing a lot of good things from the classes and from the athletic, athletics side of it. So just glad to see that those weight rooms are up and going. And I did get a chance to look at the West High gym floor, so it's coming along. It's coming along. So we'll see if we can make it for that next week. But I'll save the rest of my Board comments to the Athletic Report that Sue had.
Okay. I had spoken with Mr. Huff last week on Friday regarding the gym floor and a couple other things. And so I said, why don't you give us some of the highlights of our athletic falls, fall situation? And so he sent me this, and he wanted, this is as of Friday, so not including the weekend stuff. But Waterloo East High volleyball team leads the Iowa Alliance Conference North Division with a 4-0 conference record, and they are 11 and 10 overall. West volleyball is currently tied for third place with a conference record of 2 and 3 in the MVC Valley Division and a 7 and 11 record overall. The West High Boys Cross Country has all five of their top runners under 18 minutes, with the lead runner under 17 minutes for the 5K, and that's Presley Burns, and he is a sophomore at West High. So that's pretty amazing. And the Waterloo Swimming and Diving finished first in the 19 Waterloo Invitational on 9/10, and secured a victory of an MVC team, Cedar Rapids, Washington, at a home meet. East High successfully reformulated their Boys and Girls Cross Country teams, with the boys achieving a team score in every single meet this year. That is awesome. They have about 10 runners overall in the restarted teams. So it's a building process, and it'll just keep going. Go Trojans. Both East and West Boys Fall Golfing have had solid outings, with East placing second in the Metro Tournament and finishing out of last place in most of their meets for the first time in many, many years. Both East and West hosted successful volleyball invitationals, with East hosting the first annual Haley Ackerman Invite, and West hosting the annual Eileen Bennega Invite. Both the East and West football teams continue to work hard. They practice hard. They've had a couple bad losses over the weekend, but they're improving each week. West had a successful homecoming week, and East's homecoming is this Friday. The East High Ring of Honor inducted the 2022 class at East High, which included a, like, five former athletes in, from East High. And our junior high teams have more numbers than they have had in many, many years. Some of the highlights of the junior high is the Waterloo Boys Cross Country won the NP invite while having the top two runners in the meet. Carver's 7th grade football team claimed a victory on the road against Pete. Woo! Hoover's 7th grade football team defeated Holmes at home. Woo-hoo! And the Hoover 7th grade volleyball team avenged an earlier season loss to Holmes with the win over Holmes at Hoover this past week. And our first official middle school soccer season will be beginning next Monday, October 3. And Mr. Huff wanted to say, please give a big thank you to all of our coaches and athletic directors for all of their work to provide these tremendous opportunities for all of our students. So pretty exciting stuff happening in the athletic world. And I did want to also stress that we do have conferences coming up already in two weeks, on October 11th and October 13th is pre-K through 12 conferences. So keep that in mind, students that get caught up and look at what's missing. up and look at what's missing, and your conferences, and parents hopefully attending will be October eleventh and October thirteenth.
Will those still be a virtual option this year, do you know?
Oh, I have not heard that.
I think they are.
Okay.
I'll check my email, but I think they, they sent the email out yesterday, Sunday, yesterday, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
So, that is all I have, Esther, back to you.
Yep, I, I, Dan Huff stopped me before I walked in, and wanted me to give an update as well on some athletic things, so, as most of you know, I, I'm an official as well, and one of the founding members of the WAOA, Waterloo Area Official Association, and Mr. Huff just wanted me to talk about or mention that we had an opportunity to do a volleyball clinic. We hosted a volleyball clinic at East High, so, thank you to Coach Montgomery, also to Jake Shafer and Tim Zapata, who are our facilitators. We had about eight officials show up, we do what some may consider like a grow-your-own official, so we have quite a few officials, close to forty in the area, and he, he thanks us often about just being able to provide a service, so that the youth in the area can have a opportunity to continue athletics. There's a shortage of officials in the state and around the country, but, and, and I just told him a few minutes ago, we never like to toot our own horns or anything like that, I'm a fairly humble person, but, he wanted me to mention, just with, with, with the group that, that we have, we, the students have been allowed to participate, continue to participate in athletics around the city, where in some places, they're canceling games, and they're postponing, just so you can have crews that officiate football and volleyball, and basketball, and those things, so, he wanted me to mention that, so again, thank you to...
He thanks for doing that, too, and like concessions, like, we feed our officials, like, they, they deserve everything, it's a hard job, so.
Oh, definitely, yeah, especially in this day and age.
Yeah.
But, so thank you to Coach Montgomery at Waterloo, he's a volleyball coach, and then Jake Shafer and Tim Zapata, so, just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much, so, can I ask for a motion to adjourn this evening?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you all for coming tonight.